Good evening, I would like to start the Sohegan School Board meeting at six o'clock. It is Thursday, December seventh. And before we get started, I'd just like to take a moment and recognize the loss of one of our teachers, Tom Sawyer. Tom started as an intern at Sohegan High School over twenty-seven years ago, and then he chose to join the staff as a teacher. He enjoyed not only teaching social studies, but working with students to become better and more thoughtful citizens through advisory and winter session programs. Tom touched the hearts of not only students, but many of the faculty members. Our hearts are with Julian and her family as they work through their loss, and I'd like to ask that we take a moment of silence for Tom. Okay, thank you very much, and I'd also just like to extend a, a, a thank you to Dana Curran and to Tim Catro for all their extra efforts. For the care that they gave to the family and staff. Okay, going on to our meeting, um, I'd like to see if there's any public input. Um, we have one person here, if they have any interest, no, do you have anyone online?
No one online.
And nobody's online, so we'll keep, um, public comment open and, uh, revisit at the end of our meeting. The consent agenda has the draft minutes. If I could, uh, ask first of all, if we have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a second. Second, uh, any concerns, questions, or changes that need to be made to the minutes? Seeing none, um, I guess that we don't have anybody online, so we can vote, so though those in favor of accepting the consent agenda? And either opposed? Or any abstentions, one abstention? Okay, um. We go into principals reports, Dana, is there anything you would like to address before we open up for questions?
Good, um, yes, thank you, uh. I am happy to answer any questions about the report, we did receive a few in advance, which were really helpful, so. Um, you should have that ancillary piece of paper with some information on it. Um, I'll just speak really briefly to it, so, uh, some questions about trends with enrollment, if we're seeing any trends. Um, with our ex, with our students who are exiting and, um, at this time, we are not, so you, you can see on the, um, side under the notes. Um, it, it's mainly students that are moving. Um, WD is a withdrawal, which we spoke about at a previous meeting, and then HS is high set, so students who are taking a high school equivalency exam. Um, one of the things that we'd like to do, um. Uh, is, you know, take a look at the longitudinal enrollment data over time to, to have a better understanding of the story. Um, you can see transfers in and transfers out, so we're holding study at six ninety-two right now. Um, the, uh, second question that we received, uh, was about, um. The status of some of our benches throughout the main building and the annexed building, particularly in. The areas where students are congregating, um, they're not in amazing shape, so, uh, we have started the process with Roger. Um, to try to get these repaired, hopefully in-house, um, and on that piece of paper, you just have. Kind of an inventory or punch list of what needs to be repaired and where. Um, another question that we got was around, um, the work that we're doing to enhance a data culture, so that's one of our three priorities for this year. Um, and we, um, are highlighting the work that we're doing specifically with our ninth grade teams right now. Um, using the data wise process, and so there's some question about what is the data wise process and how is it different? Um, really, the data wise process is about collaboration, examination of evidence. And, um, making data informed decisions, um, and so it provides, it provides teachers a framework to. Um, prepare to do that work, to inquire and to act, and it keeps it in an iterative state, so. What, once you act, you get back into the inquiry and see kind of what your targeted interventions, what impact they had or didn't have. Um, and what's really great about it is that, you know, it's, it's road tested, um, so, uh, one of our COPs is actually reading. Case studies of schools where it's been implemented and the impact. Um, but the idea is that it fosters this idea of continuous improvement, um, so you're never done. And, uh, it really empowers informed decisions based on evidence, so, um. In terms of how is that different than what we've done in, at Sohegan in the past? In the past, teachers have engaged in, you know, um, evidence-based examination of practice, but it's been, um. Smaller in scope, so you might have done it following a unit test, or a group of teachers might do it for a course, and really. We're starting down the path of a more, um, global approach, right, so examining some of our, um, achievement data, like. Uh, broader achievement data and then working backwards to get more granular, so this team, the, this team started with NWA. And then they're triangulating with other data points from PSAT. Which comes after and as well as classroom assessment data, um, and right now. Um, based on the work that they've done as, uh, digging into the data, they're noticing a skill gap with summarizing, so that's what, that's the focus. Um, that's the focus skill right now, so it'll be exciting to see what they do in that realm, um, so it's the whole ninth grade team. Um, part of that question about our ninth grade was, you know, are we seeing some of the same trends that we saw last year regarding some student behavior? We had some vandalism, we had some disruptive behavior with our ninth grade last year. And it's really great to report that we are not seeing that behavior, so we don't have any incidents of vandalism to report, um, and things that are. Incredibly disruptive to the learning environment are not rising to that level, um, this year, that being said. Um, and I spoke with Steve about this earlier this week, that being said, we do have, you know, handful of students with really complex needs right now. Um, and we're working really hard to help them access their education and, um, and. Be a really important part of the community, so, um, that takes a lot of time, so you will see. Um, the other piece of data that's on that ancillary sheet, uh, that was requested was our observations, so I, you know. Full transparency, the amount of time that I personally as principal am investing in our complex students is pretty high, so. Um, you see that as the number of classroom visits that I personally am doing is lower, um, because I'm tending to those other issues. So I think we're at about forty percent completion for our formal observations, and I don't know, twenty something percent for the informal observations. So that's a little bit lower than we'd like it to be typically, um, knowing that we're down a humanities domain later and knowing that. I feel like I have been pulled in other directions, I think that's explainable, I also think it's not insurmountable, I think we'll still. Re, reach the goals that we have set for ourselves in terms of, um, supervision evaluation, both the short term and the long term goals. Um, we will get there, but, um, you know, we also took two weeks off, um, following the death of Tom. Um, wasn't exactly the right time to be getting into classrooms in that kind of way, so, um, but we, I'm, I'm confident that we'll. That we'll get back on track in that area, so, um, that, those were addressing the questions that I already knew in advance, so thank you, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, I'll open it up, who, any board member have questions for Dana? Mr. Glover.
Yeah, I, I, just on the data thing, that's really cool, I like what you're saying, um. Are there, is there any student involvement in the analyzing this data?
So, um, I, I think that it's a definitely a big part of kind of our culture, is that we want students to be doing that. We want students to be actively engaged in goal setting, um, it's part of the WSPs, it's part of our benchmarks for advisories that students are engaging in goal setting. Ref, uh, it's part of our purpose of our grades, that students are using their grades to engage with this particular piece with the ninth grade team, we haven't gotten to that step yet. Um, mostly because our teachers haven't been fully, um, fully, uh, exposed to the scope and sequence of the, of the. Framework yet, but I think there's definitely a piece for students in here.
To look at their own data.
Yeah, absolutely, and make goals and, and follow up on them, absolutely.
Yeah, it's good, and I guess would that, if, if and when that happens, would be integrated in what, like, data analytics types courses?
Oh, sure, I mean, I think, so right now, it's definite, it's, it's an expected part of advisory, that students are setting goals and. And reflecting on their progress, we actually have benchmarks that coincide with the end of a reporting period where students should be looking at their grades. Thinking about what they, you know, what, what did you achieve, where do you want to work, but something that's a little bit more systematic, I think, could be an end result of this. Work. Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else have questions? Um, I, you know, Dana, I, I was reading in your report about the program of studies and. There was a, looked like some reflection and feedback and review of what, what might come forward, and again, I. Does some of that feedback of what sort of courses might be looked at include the students' feedback, I'm assuming?
Yeah, um, yes, it does, so, hmm, last year or the year before, we gave a pretty comprehensive survey to students about the types of courses. That they were interested in, and so some of our, some of the goals that we're continuing to carry out are aligned to that, to that information. Um, and then when teachers are proposing new courses, there's a piece that talks about, like, how does this incorporate? Um, student needs, student demand, student interest, um, so that is absolutely kind of the, one of the drivers.
Yeah, yeah, and the one thing I just want to remind everybody too is, we talk about data-driven and looking at a lot of data. And we're not forgetting about the students they're behind, and they're part of this whole equation that we are looking at the whole student, so even though you hear us talk about data. It's something that we can make sure that we're looking to improve, but we haven't forgot about the whole student, and we still do all that work, um, with them on that, so. Izzy, correct us, you correct me if I'm wrong, but you haven't seen that change, because that's part of what we feel is very Sohegan, so we want to keep that, so thank you. Um, the other, the other thing I saw, I have a question, the CTE agreement, so it looks like we have some new CTE agreements. Happening.
Yeah, we don't have one yet, but we need.
Working on, yeah, there was, um, the question I had, uh, turn. Oh, the, the center's proposed sending schools designate a primary center with swing seat availability other schools. With the exception of decisions by, uh, could you explain what that all means?
Sure, so, um, historically been part of region sixteen, which has included, um, Nashua, Alverne, and Milford. And, um, and we would send students to all of those, we could send students potentially to all of those centers. Um, and with some of the new stuff that's been pushed down from the state around the agreements and the, and renewing them and what they need to include now. And the fact that they're four years compared to twenty years, that region is now dissolved, so there's no more regional agreement for those three centers. And, um, a lot of it has to do with federal funding, I think Perkins dollars, and, uh, so, the, the. The CTE centers themselves, their proposal was, um, pick a place that you want to go, because it maximizes the money that we get. From the feds.
Gotcha.
And we can plan better, et cetera, et cetera, and so they're asking sending schools to designate. A school, like, one primary center where we would send our kids. Um, so obviously, a lot of time and energy and thought is going into this, particularly looking at what does each center offer? And where are our students going, um, and for what, and over time, where have they gone? Um. So, uh, so right now, the vast majority of our students are going to Nashua. Right, because when you get Nashua, you get north and south, the two centers, so the majority of our students are going to Nashua. Um, and there are no programs in, um, Milford that aren't also offered by Nashua. Um, there are some unique, um, programs at Alverne, particularly the Vet Tech, J, JROTC being. A CTE, um, and maybe heavy machinery, um, so. The centers, again, they're asking us to designate a primary place where we are going to promote our students going. And, but because all of the centers really want to promote this work, they're, they're willing to hold a certain number of seats for. Kids that, you know, okay, we don't have a primary agreement with Alverne, but we still can send kids to ROTC there. Um, so that's kind of, those are kind of the details that are still in the works, because clearly, I think Milford's trying to build a new CTE center, and what's the implication if we're not sending kids there? So it's.
Gotcha.
Above my pay grade now.
Yes, no, thank you for the explanation, I wasn't a hundred percent clear on. What that was, so thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for Dana?
And it will come back to the board, the CTE agreement.
But it's an agreement, okay, okay.
But, yeah, and I think I put in there, they're hoping to have, they're hoping to move forward in, like, January with a decision.
Okay, great.
And, and there's a, another meeting scheduled with superintendents in January.
Okay, yeah, because we have, what, almost tripled the number of students this year as we even did last year going to CTE program, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's nice that we're getting on top of the agreements, I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who's, who's making the decision about dissolution and reorganizing the agreement structure? That Department of Ed, is that?
Yeah, that was part of the, the RSA that was passed.
That's so statutory.
Mm-hmm.
And it, what, empowered? Who to, to make these agreements, individual school districts with other schools, so which is. One-on-one agreements with our district and say Nashua or whichever?
Right, yes, and that's part of the complexity, is, uh, there was some legislation, but not a ton of guidance, and so that's why people are.
Trying to figure it out.
Trying to figure it out.
Great, um, if there's nothing else for the principal report, Dana, thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, any questions about the facilities or the NEAS notification letter? Mr. Keith?
Yeah, we can provide a copy.
Uh, anything else? All right, we will move on, community council update, Izzy.
Hello, the, uh, referendum proposal that I spoke about the last time that I was here, um, did fail. Um, this was due to a feeling of a lack of necessity, um, especially with the, with the, um. Incorporation of forums, we're starting to get those to start running again, um, and we're planning to do one of those really soon. Um, Case and Fox are communicators working really diligently on something like that. Um, we just passed our bus pass proposal, which is basically putting a forum onto Power School. Where a parent can say, my student can ride, um, a specific bus and go to a specific stop whenever they want to. So Linda does have that consent, and she's able to write those bus passes without constantly calling the parent every time that a student wants to go on that bus. Um, so that did just pass, uh, we're working with Galen to start getting that onto Power School. Um, the Archives Committee has really started to get that work done with, um, getting those binders into a digital. Google, um. Sorry, excuse me, Google Drive, um, and we've already gotten through one year, um, but yeah, we're just going binder by binder for that. And then as for SAC, we are planning a Polar Express night, um, for December sixteenth at the Mount Vernon Village School. Uh, which is really just a day for parents to drop off their kids, get some holiday shopping done, and then the kids can have a fun time, watch the Polar Express. Do some face painting and do a bunch of holiday crafts, have a good time, so.
Nice, like it. Cool, anyone, any questions for community council?
I do, two questions, um, what are, could you keep telling us a little bit more about, uh, the forums that you mentioned of as in lieu of referendum?
Yeah, um, so Kason has been working with Jenny Dinek and Mo Green, um, to start to incorporate some forums. Um, and we're planning to do that, I think, for our next proposal, um, I'm not too sure on the specifics for the forums. Um, but it's basically the same plan as they were before COVID, um, having each grade come down and having those grade-specific forums in the theater. Uh, where students are able to ask their specific class reps or at-large reps questions about anything that's happening at council or anything that's happening around the school. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I actually met with Kason this week, Jenny and Kason and I met, um. It's not a matter of whether to hold forums, it's a matter of how to hold forums, we really are, are working with Kason a lot, um. To put in, uh, structure to support, um, civil discourse, critical thinking. And, um, student voice, and when we say student voice, we mean all voices, making sure that we're accounting for all voices, not just those that feel most comfortable speaking out at the podium. So, um, so Kason's proposal, um, my understanding is that it will, it will eventually be, um. Have a component in advisory as well, so that students are talking about these community council issues in their advisory, in their small group setting, as well as in the large group setting. And it's our hope that this proposal will, um, be presented on behalf of Kason, Jenny, and myself. Um, and we're really excited about that, because it represents, I think, um, three important stakeholder groups in the building, all coming together around that idea.
So this will help. I mean, one of the things you were looking to do with the referendum thing was to get a lot of feedback as to what students were thinking about, what the community council was doing, that's what I recall. So the forum is a mechanism to get that feedback without the, like, a burden or whatever, uh. Of a referendum.
Right, even before the referendum proposal failed, we were already working towards, um, reinstating forums. Um, and that's part of the reason why the referendum proposal did fail, um, just because we were already going to have those forums, and we were already going to have that device. To get feedback from the students, um, and with the referendum proposal, it would only get feedback from the students, not from, um. Administrators, not from teachers, um, only students, um, so it's kind of disenfranchising those groups.
And this solution is viable, of course, as far as you see it. Um, and then the question about the, uh, it's cool that you're archive doing the digital archive, historical records, I know your brother was keen on that. Um, do you know whether or not, as you, I guess, scan or build, make them digital, whether or not they're, um, they're done with a text searchable manner?
Um, I can check that, if you want to come back to me, um, I imagine they might not be, but they. I can double check that.
Like, you're just probably scanning pages and putting up answers.
Well, it depends on how you scan, yeah, with an optical character resolution, people will be text searchable, to the extent that the.
So people can find if there was a prior.
Yeah, I mean, for our policies, for example, until now, slowly as we process through them, you can't text search them. And it's a bit of a nightmare, I mean, it's not a nightmare.
It's more difficult.
It's more difficult to find what you're actually looking for, so it's less efficient, so to the extent that this is a functional archive. If you could, if there's a technological way to make it text searchable, as you do this work, I say, please do it for the sake of everybody.
It can also depend on what you use for, for a reader too, because I know, what I get on my Apple, will pick up almost any text and make it searchable. You know, if you guys, experience the same thing, so.
Yeah, as they stand, um, they are not text searchable, but I can absolutely speak to the Archives Committee to get that to be something that we, um, use. We have been using like the actual physical, uh, copiers, um, as scanners, and so that's why they just go into a PDF. Because we can put a stack of papers in and just bring them out, um, but yeah, absolutely.
Okay, but I guess I would say to that is, maybe explore what it would take to make them searchable. And if it takes resources, update us on that, and we can have, entertain a discussion about supporting that effort.
Anything else for Izzy? Thank you very much, we appreciate all of your hard work and the rest of community council as well. Uh, okay, moving on to budget presentation, and one thing, before we even get started. She reminded me this evening is that we need to actually take a motion on each warrant article and move it to the public hearing. So after we start reviewing this, we'll, we'll go through each one and see if we want to move it forward to the public hearing.
Yeah. Sounds good. Wait for us to pop it up there.
The right one, right?
That is it.
Like that.
All right. Go to budget review. Yeah, and then you can just go to the next page, so, yeah. Um, so this is the summary of the budget changes from draft two to draft three, not a whole heck of a lot. Um, and also, I did share this with, um, with all of you, so you have it in your inbox as well. So we, as you know, from the SAU, um, budget hearing, we now have the SEU assessment for all the school districts. So, Sohegan's increased a little bit, um, because I was using projected enrollment and didn't have the average daily membership and attendance yet. And then the other changes are just miscellaneous changes, we had a, um, a healthcare election change that we needed to fix and, and some other various odds and ends. So that was, um, a three thousand two hundred eighty-three dollar difference, so the total increase is nine thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars. Why? So the total, um, percent change from FY twenty-four to twenty-five did not change, it's still one point two percent. Um, the FY twenty-four operating budget to the default is actually a decrease. So that means that we budgeted really closely to the, um, the existing budget, um, as far as the default. And there were a, um, quite, quite a number of, um, decreases in, in student services. And that's really why it's so close and why it's actually a decrease. Um, so the default to their proposed is the two fifty-six, two eighty-six, and the overall change from twenty-four to twenty-five is. Two forty-eight, three sixty-eight, or the one point two percent. So next slide, I'm not going to go through all this, nothing really changed from the last time, um. Uh, when you're getting ready for public hearing, we can go into some more detail, I have some really good notes for who's ever going to be presenting, but.
And we're going to be sitting down with Sohegan Finance Committee too.
Yep, yep.
Hopefully the next couple.
Yeah, so this hasn't really changed from the prior draft, we can move on to default. Um, this, the, the change is really what I was talking about, the, the reduction from the twenty-four. Uh, budget to the twenty-five default, you can see that there's some increases in, in regular ed salaries. And special ed transportation, uh, the net, there's a net decrease in the SEU assessment, and a pretty significant net decrease in student services. And then all of the other ups and downs of all of the other accounts, um, is about twenty-one thousand, so the total change between these two. Between the budget and the twenty-five default calculation, um, is a little under eight thousand dollars. And this, um, I, I took notes from what, um, folks had wanted to show. Um, in this calculation, from the twenty-five default calculation to the twenty-five proposed budget. So rather than just showing the categories, which I do have a slide for that if you want it, um, I'm showing the actual. Um, changes primarily in positions, so these are the position ads for the business teacher. The Saber Flex Classroom Assistant and the point five Learning Commons Math Support, so that total is just under two hundred thousand dollars. Or about one percent of that, that change, um, there's also some added costs for the improved CTE program. Um, so we've expanded that program to, um, to really meet the needs of the students, so that's a little over thirty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, then there's also some technology ads, um, that, as you know, are not included in the default, so that's another twenty-two thousand. And then there's lots of ups and downs in all of the other categories that account for about, um, a four thousand dollar decrease. Uh, so the total change between the default and the proposed is two fifty-six, two eighty-six. Skipping these two.
Thank you for presenting in that way.
Yeah, you're welcome, yep, no problem. All right, so, we're on to revenue, um, so this is our first look at revenue, and I want to say it's. It's always a challenge, it's early, it's December, we don't know everything yet, um, we do have numbers for FY twenty-four. The tax rate has been set for both Amherst and Mount Vernon, so we do know those numbers, twenty-five are still a projection. Um, as I go through, I'll say that there's some information that comes in, um, in terms of potential excess revenue. But I don't find out about that until the end of December, so that's, um, special ed aid, that's a, um, a, a, that was a significant change last year. We received more in that revenue than we had, had budgeted. Um, Medicaid aid is also another one that is really tough to budget for, so, so we do our best, so this is my best estimate at this point. Um, hoping to have it more refined for a public hearing and then, uh, possibly make some changes before deliberative. So food service, that's just a, a change in the budget that has gone up from, uh, twenty-four to twenty-five. And we, we budget to offset. And we, we budget to offset the expenditures as revenue. Uh, grants are staying flat. I, I budgeted the other federal state and local aid flat as well. Um, I broke this out this year to show the amount that was voted from fund balance for warrant articles for both 24 and 25, and then the amount that's used to offset the tax rate instead of lumping those together. Hopefully that provides more clarity. So you'll see we are asking for additional funds from fund balance in the amount of $190,000. Uh, so that is, uh, that would not go into the column offsetting the tax rate because if those, those warrant articles pass, then those will be funded from FY24 unassigned fund balance. I'm estimating uh, an additional $320,000 from fund balance. I took a look historically at what we have had for unassigned fund balance over the last five years. And we've typically had around two and a half percent of expenditures. So that's around 500 and something thousand or so. And then revenues have been similar. I am not, at this point, I, I don't want to project quite what we've received in the past for revenue until I find out that special aid, special ed aid number. And uh, what we don't want to do is over project money that we'd be getting back and then not be able to, to meet the tax rate obligations that we're saying. So at this point, it's, it is an estimate, but about two and a half percent is, is a decent number for projecting expenditure savings from the budget. All right, so this shows the projected tax effort. So we have our total appropriation in 24 and then in 25 and then the difference. So that's uh, the budget as well as all of the warrant articles. So the change in appropriations is the 438, 368 less the, that revenue calculation that was on the prior slide. And mostly because we're still being conservative in the unassigned fund balance. And we did give a significant amount of money back to the taxpayers to offset this year's tax rate. There is a change in for 19889 in revenue that we don't have, or a reduction in revenue. Uh, less adequacy aid and swept, which is the statewide property tax. I broke this out by town also to hopefully provide a little more clarity. So for Amherst, Amherst is receiving $16,039 more in adequacy and swept. And Mont Vernon is receiving $11,576 less in adequacy and swept. So the total tax effort from 24 to 25 is 853,794. And then this slide will actually show the estimated tax impact. So we have the total tax effort and the change that I just described, the 853, 794. And then that's broken out between Amherst and Mont Vernon. So we show the change in that amount for Amherst, which is the 624, 596. We have updated valuation numbers for the town. So the estimated tax impact for Amherst is 26 cents. For Mont Vernon, the difference is 229, 198, and that's also an updated valuation. And the estimated tax impact for Mont Vernon is 69 cents. All right, and then we can probably kind of blow through these. These are all similar. And then we're up to the warrant articles. So um, I don't know if you want to do questions and then go to the warrant articles.
Let's do the, the questions. We'll stick with the record first and then we can move each one.
Yep.
Questions on budget.
Hey, yeah, could you maybe go to the revenue slide again?
Yep.
I mean, if there was one slide that needs an asterisk, probably to that one.
Yeah, this one or?
Yeah.
Which one?
That, that one.
Or the whole one consolidated? You want?
That one. That was where you were explaining about, you know, the limitations of the estimates, what we know, what we don't know and so on and so forth. And I was trying to write some of this stuff down. So the two point, what you were saying, I believe, is historically, 2.5% of expenditures is a reasonable rough order estimate uh, for what the undecided fund balance might look like.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Spending 97 and a half percent of the budget's pretty good.
Yeah, well, and spending less than 100% is required. So getting close, but not scarily close
Yep.
is a good place to operate. Yeah. I guess because it's so heavily caveated, I really like the direction that had to have this in there. Maybe it does need an asterisk or a second sheet to say, okay, here's what we're really talking about. You know, note, footnotes, or I don't know, something.
Yeah.
It's just estimate, estimate, estimate everywhere. You know, moderate confidence based on historical review.
Yeah.
Completely low confidence, just, I don't know what, you know, whatever you're. Doesn't have to be competence driven, but I think you understand what I'm saying.
Yep.
Just to make it clear.
Well, we, we try to.
None of that's really any guarantee. The whole thing is, is, is a projection.
Right. I mean, and we try to, we try to present something reasonable for what the unassigned fund balance is. But we don't want to over promise and, and put on the tax, on the ballot that the tax rate is going to be lower than what it actually ends up being. We'd rather estimate higher.
Yes, I appreciate that disposition.
Yeah.
Worse than this. We try hard not to have it worse than that. Right.
And we, that did happen last year. We ended up with a lower tax rate than what we put on the ballot. So.
That's typically good.
It is good. You, you don't want it too far because then.
People are complaining, why are you?
So this is the challenge. So, and it's hard to, you know, people put in funds for the budget and we expect it to be used. But typically they're, you know, it's, it's not all used. So if you're within two and a half percent, that's, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
And then the revenue is, is, is difficult to, to project. So.
Well, I mean, some of this is discussion, I guess, for us really. I mean, the revenue. I'm glad you broke out the.
The two fund balance and the offset tax rate?
Yes.
Yes, I really like that.
The end of the day, that's really where some of our decision making goes into what we're gonna look for. And so, I don't know, maybe I was sort of thinking out loud, but I raised at the last meeting that the notion of supporting more the AP exams and the dual enrollment credits. And I'd like to have a discussion about that. A couple of years ago, we did put in, I think it was like 50,000.
I think we're doing 30, 30 for AP and 30 for dual enrollment was 60.
Yeah. So I think we should seriously consider, I mean, that's hundreds and hundreds of students are involved in that, from our slides. People are taking AP exams in AP classes and dual enrollment classes. If we're going to put, you know, 40 grand to help the CTE books, that's, that's good to help those students. But I would, I would like to see us revisit this notion of alleviating the burden of tuition for dual enrollments and AP exam fees.
Adding that to the budget.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I don't, I mean, last two years it was 60 grand. Is that the right number? I, I don't know. I guess, I guess it would be a function of.
It was 15 and 15. Sorry. I spoke wrong. I spelled incorrectly. Yes.
Okay, I thought, I thought it was 25, 25. You thought it was 30, 30.
Yeah, 15, 15. Thank you.
You know, as at the time, I remember that was a notional number. It wasn't based on any specific evidence. So we have slides, we have current data, speaking of data culture, on who's, who, who, what the current enrollments are, how historically that's been. So we could actually have a more refined number by looking at our data. I would much prefer to know what that is before making a motion to a pretty specific dollar amount. You know, is, is 100%, you know, within our wheelhouse or is, is half support, what we're willing to go? I don't know what the answer is because I don't know what full support would look like.
Okay.
We can, we can look into some specific stuff and get some numbers.
Yeah, it'd be great.
That's something, I mean, I hate changing things on a public hearing date. If we added, if we added 30,000.
Yeah, I don't think you have a meeting before then to, to do it. So it would have to be done at that.
At, at that meeting. Yeah. Unless we do it when we meet with the Sohegan Finance Committee.
PPC.
Is that going to be?
People adding now and then take it out later or adjust the number later. That was fair.
Uh, we don't know how much we'd be adding necessarily. If you keep it at the 15 and 15 or if you do, I, I don't know. I think I would rather wait to hear the numbers.
You can put in a placeholder if you think it's better to have something in there before the public hearing.
Let's see if people are up for it to begin with. So I kind of want to have maybe a motion to, on the floor so we can have floor discussion.
Rather have a motion on the floor to have floor discussion.
So make a, yeah, I mean, you could put a motion to look at adding funds to the budget for AP and dual enrollment.
Oh, well, I would like that. Okay, I move that, what, we explore supporting AP and dual enrollment in our budget for next year.
I have a motion in a second from Mr. O'Keefe. Okay, open for discussion. Mr. O'Keefe feels like you were.
Yeah, so I, I don't support this in a couple of reasons. Number one, I think it's got to be vetted through the actual budget process. So the time to have engaged in that conversation probably should have started with the administration back in the summertime, having the proper process go ahead and bring forward proposals. How many kids are actually engaging? How many kids are not? What the available resources are? Is it successful? Is it not successful? We've heard a lot of negative feedback about dual enrollment over the years. I don't think doing this at the last minute is the appropriate thing to do. I just don't. I think if we want to have this conversation for next year's budget, we can direct our superintendent and our school principal to report to us back in, you know, May or June or July about the opportunities to go ahead and add that to next year's budget. I think that's the proper process and then filter it through our budget committee, uh, through the community, through feedback, through sessions, all those opportunities to do this at the last meeting. I'm sorry, I just don't support it.
Other discussion. I, I have to say, I, I kind of lean the way Mr. O'Keefe is. I'm, I'm a big supporter of wanting to help the students. But I think without the data and moving this last minute is a little, a little uncomfortable. Knowing that we have PPC negotiation, warrant article probably going on and other things. I want to be hesitant. Want to make sure we're, we're fully supporting the direction of the administration of whether it's dual enrollment, AP, are we funding both or we, where, where are they going with the classes, I think is just as important. I think I'd like to hold off and maybe do it in the budget for next year, but.
I'd like to, I mean, this is just to look into it. I would like to, to know that data.
Okay.
As soon as it's available. We could do it by next meeting. It'd be great. We don't have to approve it. We're still against it. This is just to look into it, I believe, right?
You want to just, if we want to say look into it, not necessarily, we're absolutely doing it, but we're looking into it. Is that something that you could do without a, I mean, and you guys are busy. It's what we'll look at. Dual enrollment and AP, and AP, yeah.
We, you, this data has already been presented. We, we had the numbers somebody. I can't remember who.
Somewhere we have the. What kids actually signed up.
But dual, dual enrollment is, you get two classes, two courses a year paid for by the state.
Just STEM ones. I think just certain STEM ones. Yeah. Yeah, only I think.
That.
Math, science. Yeah.
The reason why I'm bringing it up, I mean, I appreciate Stephen's concern and your support of that concern. I don't know, that's a lot of students to support and it hasn't been just I think we could do something more than what we've been doing. This isn't a particularly new idea and it's probably not that much money.
So here's my suggestion because I know we're missing two of our board members who might want to weigh in on this as well. We could have them look into what that dollar amount might look like based on number of enrollment. And then, then when we have the two other board members here and we have a full board, they might have input that is very, is just as important as what we're seeing here. What's the thoughts?
I would be satisfied with that because knowing what the number is, how much that would cost gives us an opportunity to say whether or not we're going to support this year or not.
Okay.
I, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean.
I'm, I'm not against supporting it.
Don't know that, you tell me, is that a big lift? I know everyone's busy, but as far as I remember in board meeting, the data exists. So put the number of students times whatever it costs to take a exam and.
See what that looks like.
Right.
We can see what it looks like.
Dual enrollment might be a little different because New Orleans is more expensive than, than you, Schnook, but.
Okay. I have just a couple of things to think about. So I would suggest that you find a way to let Advisory Finance Committee weigh in on this because this hasn't been part of the budget process. So I think it, it would behoove the board to allow them the opportunity to, to know that this is a change. And then just wondering, when are you thinking of potentially voting on this? Because things have to change.
Right. Yeah. So that's, that's my question is if, if it was brought forward, I mean, the we know we want to meet with Sohegan Finance Committee over just looking at the budget to hear their feedback because we haven't had that opportunity. They're waiting on the PPC, so we're hoping that'll happen the next week or two.
Okay.
We could make an official meeting and we could potentially address it right then.
Okay.
So it's before the January public hearing?
I think that would be best, but if you're going to make a change at public hearing, you can, that, that can happen. So, and that's okay.
Yeah. So I, that would, if anything, that's where I think.
I mean, I just, right, because we're going to have a draft of all the warrant articles and all of that. So are we changing?
Right, because now all of a sudden you're changing the verbiage in the middle of the.
Right, and I have to have the, like, the DRA document draft as well, so.
So that. What it needs to happen.
That's encouraging. What I'm hearing is there's time and space because there's another meeting that is going to happen anyway.
There's limited.
But John, just know there's time and space for you, but the amount of work that that means for Amy Facy and Dana Kurt, not so much Dana, we can get it pretty quick. But Amy Facy to adjust all the warrant articles to go send those back off to get approved by people, that's not quick. And that's, that's effort. And that kind of goes back to the process that we're in. So we'll gather the data for sure. But not. But just know that it's, it's quick and easy for you guys to get a meeting and do it, but behind the scenes, there's quite a bit of effort and adjustment that is going to have to take place if this comes to fruition at this moment in time. So.
Yeah.
And so I, I look back at my tenure with, with municipal government and I look at things that lose credibility with communities. And last minute ads is always at the top of that list because they didn't have the opportunity to provide feedback to their elected leadership. They didn't go through the proper channels to go ahead and vet it to make sure it's going to be an effective use of, of community money. There are so many things that would pop up as setting up caution flags for this particular thing. I think it's got some merit. I think it's something that this board should absolutely discuss, but not do so in a four week period where we're trying to rush before a public meeting to go ahead and jam this through, uh, to, to get it on, on the warrant. I just think it's inappropriate. I just do. I think if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right. Do it with diligence and prudence. Put it through the process. Allow our, our leaders to go ahead and do all the due diligence that's required. We can ask follow-up questions. We can say, hey, you know, this dual enrollment, this person says over here, that's not really a viable solution for our students. Students may take it, but they realize that they don't transfer those credits over to college. Whatever the scenario may be, allows us to have that back and forth. If we go ahead and we try to rush this through in a three week period, because that's really what we're looking at, it's just, it's, it feels dirty. It just does.
Okay. So any other discussion? We'll take a vote on the motion. So, any other discussion? We'll take a vote on the motion. And the motion is to look into the amount. To see if we would potentially want to make an adjustment. With public hearing, okay. All right, so I'm calling vote. And those in favor of the motion. And those opposed. Right now it's two, three, so I think we're going to hold off and I think we'll look, definitely look into it for next year. Yes.
That we researched this project, because I'm going to call it a project, over the course of the next six months. To then present to the board for feedback to include in our twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Oh, that a motion?
That.
So have a second? I'll second that. You have a second? I shouldn't, you'll second, okay. Um, any discussion on that one till the, the next year?
It, it's just this way, it's not forgotten about, right? We're, we're on record, this is something that's of interest to us. And if we go through the process and the community engages it and they come, uh, to, to a meeting and provide feedback and.
Yeah.
It's something that we want to include and adopt next year, it's great.
Yeah, and, and I, I agree with you. I, my, my concern is that last-minute throw-in change and that always. That hurts our. Well, of how the public looks at us many times and I just, that last-minute change does. Make me uncomfortable. That's the only reason I really voted no before, because I, I'd rather have it vetted by. Finance Committee and the full discussion done properly. So motions on the floor, there's a second, any other discussion? Looking next year? All right, let's call the vote on that one that we will look into, those in favor. And that passes. All right, thank you, everybody. Um, so, any other discussion on the budget? So if there's no discussion on the budget, we need to move this forward at least the public hearing, right?
Yes.
So can I have a motion to move the budget warrant article number two to the public hearing?
Seconded.
Seconded. Move by Mr. Vayu, seconded by Mr. O'Keefe.
Yeah, number one will be the election of officers.
Yes. Yes. Um, so I don't think we need to have more discussion on this one. Um, so those in favor are moving it to the public hearing. And that, that's passes. All in favor. All right, next warrant article. PPC agreement, we are going to be.
Nothing there yet.
Yep, we will hopefully be discussing that very soon. Amy, did you want to speak to this one or?
Yeah, so this is the, um, the School Maintenance Fund warrant article. And as you know, Roger revised the Capital Needs Analysis Plan for Sohegan. So this is, um, the amount that was projected to be needed to take care of all the items over the next. I think he did a ten-year.
Including skylights.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, are there any updates to the skylight numbers or anything like, because we know that there's some.
So we're supposed to be getting the, um, the plans any day and then it will be costed. So I thought, I thought we were getting it on Monday or Tuesday, but that didn't happen, so.
But we're going to, but it, so if there's any changes, how would that potentially change this warrant?
Well, we're, we're, that is for, that, that money, um, was from last year's warrant article.
Right, but it's anything for the, because skylights were in a couple of.
Phase one.
Yep.
But do we need to put more in for phase two or phase three?
Well, so we didn't fund the furniture. Um, in case, in case the, um, the costing for phase one came in over budget. So I would say that I, at this point.
Because we don't have better numbers and we don't want to change this warrant article for not talking about changing another.
Right.
Well. I, I view it completely differently. I.
One could be better.
Obviously, I made a motion to fail. I view the same this way. If this is the best that we have at the time, but we're expecting something. We know that that's, that skylight replacement is going to be more than we anticipated because it has to have different features than what we originally believed. That number's going to be higher than what we did. We've already sacrificed furniture for something else. So to make us whole, my question would be, what should that number be to make us whole and on schedule for all of the things that we need to run a tip-top building? I don't know the answer, but if that number isn't it, then I would love to have a discussion about changing it to make sure that that fits what. It is to keep us on schedule and to keep us from not being on the precipice of failure. Even at this late time. Because I think that's our duty, to give this stuff out.
So I don't think there's anything that's necessarily precipitous failure. The question is, and I need, I'm going back because I don't have it top of my head, Amy.
Yep.
The, the plan, did he? Going back to look at the budget here, did he put the furniture back in his funding, his funded for the, in this amount?
So Steve, if you want to go to slide sixteen, because I'm just going into.
This one?
Yep, this one. So. The withdrawal for FY twenty-six four is. For the furniture and the skylights. But if we don't need this, if, if there isn't enough for the skylights, then it would be, we would not do the furniture replacement.
Right, so the question is, should we increase the warrant article to?
For the furniture?
For the furniture. Because the furniture is in need of replacement. We've put this off a number of years for different times. And because we've recently.
Superintendent's notes as well. At the end of the day, it's just, I view this, at the end of the day, this is still administration's budget. So we, but when do we own it? After tonight when we approve these things or at, at public hearing?
No, you own it after tonight.
Right.
Yeah. So the, the furniture replacement, as I see it, is like sixty thousand, eight sixty-two. So. We just don't know what those skylight. Is coming in.
I think from our end, we already came to terms that we weren't going to have furniture money. We've already had that conversation at the building level, at the SAU level. Um, and we were prepared to move forward for the next year of not having it and if it played out that way. Um, you know, obviously, we all know the needs and people can recall the last three years as building principal. We asked for furniture money, we put some in, we got some, we were scheduled to get some, and then it was kind of like. You know, pulled back by the SAU when I was principal because they needed to make sure they had money to fulfill the needs of the. Skylight project, which was more of a priority. So that's kind of where we, we landed. So I think where we are right now, we're, we're still in that spot as, as well. So I think the SAU is comfortable with the plan right now. After multiple conversations over the last couple of years about this process.
Okay.
Um, and I think we'll know more, right, Amy, as this kind of plays out over the next.
Okay.
Little bit.
Yep.
So, and I wish it was going faster.
Yep.
And I wish we had more information at this moment in time.
Okay.
But we've kind of settled where we settled and, and John, I appreciate your desire to have furniture because. No one wants furniture more than, than me. And, and I had hundreds of thousands of dollars each year slated to this and, uh, the building needs it, but I think. Coming into, you know, with the priorities of the, the building, the, the, the being. Being watertight and, and having a roof in order and skylights in order is, is the priority and. And so I think that's why we ended up where we ended up right now.
Yep.
So, that's my take, that's just my take.
I, I appreciate the cautiousness.
You know.
I look, my perspective is. I, we, what I have heard, my interpretation of what the community has voiced in its deliberative statements and. In its votes for a number of years has been a willingness to maintain what we have. Though surplus warrant articles have not failed. And, um, making sure that the number is the right number so that we can. Do what we need to do to make sure that that happens would find support in a vast majority of our community. So it gives me some confidence that if that number was to change, not double, it wouldn't double. It might go up some tens of thousands of dollars, probably be my estimate, that that wouldn't be met with. With Adam, with anger and resentment, it would be met with, oh, you know, good, thanks. Appreciate that. And that, that's the board member perspective. That's the, from the community represented side of the equation. I, and I appreciate. Your maybe a little bit cautious in the administrative side because certain things haven't passed because it's, it's like a little, like very cautious, so let's. It's like the bare, bare bones and I appreciate that approach, but I'm coming at it from the angle that I just described.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. I do. I, I really do.
With the AP and DE support, same philosophy, um, in my mind, so.
Yeah.
So when we, so at the end of the day, this is, this is for us board members, it becomes, oh, we own it. So what do we want to own? We want to own that number or do we want to own a number that's, uh. X thousands of thousands of dollars more than that to, to keep us on track on our maintenance schedule.
Mm-hmm.
That's the question for us. Guess to know whether we support that or not would be to know like where is the delta?
Right, we.
We know there's a delta, just don't know what that number is.
Right, exactly. Unfortunately, we don't know the, the amount for those skylights. Um.
But it should have come soon, so maybe by the time we have our meeting with, um, the Sohegan Advisory Finance, we might know that number.
And maybe we only need to add, maybe we can only add thirty thousand or one.
Then it has to be costed.
It'll be a little while.
It's going to be a little.
Oh, it'll be a little while to be costed.
Oh.
So, you know, that's a factor of safety.
Yeah, it's just complicated. It, it, it's supposed to be a simple add, you know, purchase, but it. Isn't because of the ventilation system, so.
For the fire safety piece.
Yeah, so it, it, yeah, it just took a long time to get that figured out. Um, working with the state, working with the fire team, so. And now. You know, architects are busy and it's just taking a while.
Okay.
Kind of a funny situation for the board to force more money on the administration than they really want. Doesn't happen in every board, I can tell you that.
So where, where do we stand? Where's the thoughts on this? Or do we want to? Wait until there's more information and we'd have to potentially build in more next year? When we have actual numbers? Because right now we'd be guessing at what to add.
Well, we don't know what the.
Don't know.
Don't know what the cost of the skylight is going to be yet.
Right, so we don't.
Won't know for a while, but we could, we do have a reasonable estimate of the furniture need that is going unmet, yeah, somewhere?
Well, no, they're just holding off until they know how much the skylights are going to cost. So what if it comes in and they're able to still buy some furniture? They might. So again, it's that guess, it's not hard numbers. We might want to wait till next year and be able to justify the dollar amount we put in next year saying. This is where we are, we know that skylights cost this, we know we held off on furniture because of this, or maybe they find out they can do some.
But it's, it's six to one, half dozen to another, if you.
We don't have hard numbers.
Furniture. I'm fun, that's what I'm trying to say, it's fun balance anyway. It's either fun balance going here to be spent on furniture or it's fun balance, it's going right to furniture. So, because it's coming out of the same fun balance pot, it's six to one, half dozen to another. For the furniture piece, so if, if you really want furniture and there's not enough money, then, then, you know, I've already asked for a van, let's be honest. Little, little, right, we got a little van penciled in possibly. And maybe furniture's more, you know, more appropriate than a van, but it's coming out of the same pot. You don't have to change this article to allocate fun balance to furniture. It, it had wonderful special meeting, not a special meeting, sorry, unique, you know, wonderful meeting in June where we allocate that stuff very transparently. Transparently in beautiful world.
Yes, yeah. I think because we don't have hard numbers, don't know what we would actually want to add, I'm uncomfortable again just adding money to say. Well, because in case, I'd rather have some numbers first. That's my.
Me too.
My guys, okay.
And these aren't numbers unlike the other motion available. These is not numbers that are readily available.
Right.
They're not.
It would be completely making up a whole cloud.
Correct.
And I'm not.
This one, yeah.
And it's hard to even put a reasonable factor of safety in it.
Right.
So, but again, if this eats up, this contribution eats up all the furniture, you still have fun balance to expend for. And I, and I appreciate that and maybe that's the, the right time to consider it and let's hope in the meantime. New leaks don't develop because as far as I recall, the skylight replacement was not part of the capital, uh, maintenance. Plan, the tw- twenty-year capital maintenance plan. That's a new problem that crept up. So. It's an expensive fix.
Yeah.
They're like watertight. They're not hermetically sealed, otherwise the air quality will be crap.
All right, so I think at this point, we're going to leave this warrant article alone, is my understanding? Okay, um, so if there are any other discussion on this warrant article? Or can I have a motion to move it to public hearing? Mr. Vayu moved it, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Glover, uh, all those in favor of moving it to public hearing? Well, that's who's here. Thank you very much. That passes. Next one, Turfield.
Familiar Turfield, this warrant, warrant article, so this is for, um, seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
To be added to the revolving funds.
Yep.
From fund out.
Um, any discussion on this one? This is our continuing effort to build up a, a fund, so when it's time to replace it is there. Um. Roger weighed in on this earlier and has.
There's a plan.
This is year. Three or four on this.
Uh, more than that.
Not got, I get. Could be the fourth pass?
Yeah, because I think it was my, I brought it up the first year maybe.
It was a five-year, my point is it was a five-year build. Because of the end of life and I think the fingers crossed is that the turf field will last longer than that. We have good squish.
Yeah, this is year three. It was eighty-five thousand and FY twenty-three.
This is year three.
Yep, it was seventy thousand FY twenty-four and seventy thousand FY twenty-five.
Yeah, yep, and we are in.
Year three of five.
Yes. Building it up, so.
Yeah, he's actually extended it out longer. Um, there's a plan in the budget file, but he's got, uh, seventy thousand FY twenty-six and then it drops down to fifty thousand.
Which is.
So just to be able to. Replace it at some point and then keep building for the next replacement, but he's actually done a really good job of being able to keep it going. Um, lo- much longer than expected and because the technology has improved, it's much cheaper than it was originally thought for replacement.
To replace.
Yeah.
And, and did it right for you, you did it well the first time. You put in the right amount of everything.
Yeah, the.
Crushed down to squish.
Stuff, yeah.
I mean, well-built, so it's lasting longer. That's to your credit to not cheapen out on a safety-related, right? You guys did a great job.
Those who made that decision, I appreciate that. Yes.
Here, here.
Okay, um, any, any other discussion on Turfield or can I have a motion to move it to public hearing?
Um, I'll move to. Put it in the public hearing.
All right, seconded by Mr. Vayu, uh, all those in favor of moving the Turfield replacement to the public hearing? All right, and that's passes. The next one.
The Technology Fund warrant article, so this was started last year, as you know. Um, and this is an increase, um, up to, um, at fifty thousand dollars. Through the technology. So, and, and as you know, Brian Miller, the tech director, did a, um, did a, um. A plan, a tech plan.
Mm-hmm.
So that we can.
Appreciate we've got a long-term look.
Yep, yep, so.
Being able to.
This is part of his plan.
Is his plan, is it a forever plan or is it a three-year?
It's a three-year plan.
With continuing look.
Yep.
But we're stepping, step in the right direction, it's getting us in a longer-term look, which we appreciate. Uh, any discussion on this warrant article? If not, I can have a motion to move it to public hearing. Move by, motion made by Mr. Vayu, seconded by Mr. Glover. All those in favor of moving the Technology warrant article number six to public hearing? And that passes. You're going to have a slate.
All right, all right, and then, um, this is an article to actually establish the Vehicle Expendable Trust Fund. To purchase new and replace existing vehicles. And further to raise the sum of up to twenty thousand dollars. Um, for the fund and it names the Sohegan Cooperative School Board as agents to expend from the fund.
Can we, uh, consider purchase new, replace and replace or maintain existing?
I'd like to leave room for capital repairs if you have a vehicle that just needs a new engine and it's cheaper than buying a whole new vehicle, that we could do that out of this fund.
Yes, you just figure, it's public hearing and all that fun stuff. There's usually over five thousand dollar limit before you do that. But if you want to do that, you absolutely can. But typically, that's a budgeted amount because it's so little compared to this. But we serve at the pleasure. If you would like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more in the line of like capital repairs that extend the life of the, of the vehicle for
Sure.
Period of time, something that's gonna be more than five thousand, like a, a new engine or something like that. Or, so I, I would say like capital repairs.
Okay. Yeah, I'll put that in, um, and Department of Revenue will actually review these and then legal will as well, but, um, we did discuss repairs, but I, I understand what you're saying about capital repairs.
What if there's a-
We don't know how many vehicles, uh, at the end of the day will be on our fleet. How many are now? Two?
Um, no.
We have three?
Three, we got dump trucks and
Okay.
Caters.
Right, oh, oh, okay. I was thinking the vans, but yes, we've got, uh, we've got the other vehicles as well. Five, okay. So, we may end up in, with ten maybe in the viewers. It's way more cost-effective to have these vans for transportation than it is to h- hire the bus. So they pay for themselves. So this is great for everybody. Right? Okay, so we don't know where the budget status is gonna be in five years from now. Having a fund available for maintenance, fleet maintenance could be very advantageous to whoever's here and try to figure that out at that time, time in the future. Cause it's not just the two grand to replace a something or other in one vehicle. It could be that times six vehicles. All at the same time.
So regular-
As capital repairs because you don't want to get into-
Right, you don't want regular maintenance.
You don't, that going, coming out of-
Oil changes and such.
You know, if, if you don't have enough in the, in the account and you lose a bus because somebody burns out the engine and you're stuck because you can't take the repair money out of there and you have to move money around the budget. If, if, if it says capital repairs, something that's gonna extend the life of the vehicle, then I would support that. I don't know if it's appropriate.
As opposed to routine maintenance?
I wouldn't do regular maintenance out of it. Like Steve said, it's, it's a budgeted amount.
Mm-hmm, like regular oil changes and stuff are regular budgeted amounts. Those are not.
Tires.
But you might get into a situation where you, you know, the antifreeze runs out and they keep running the bus and it seasons up the engine, but you don't have enough in the account. You have to go out and buy a whole new bus or a new van. And it would make sense to just replace that engine rather than go out and buy a new vehicle.
It, um, I agree, cause even though, because it ages to expand, you don't need, but it's really good practice to always have a, have a public hearing anytime you take money out of a trust. So you won't do that for oil changes. That's, that would cost more to run the ad and stuff with the oil change. Um, but if you want capital.
Legal understands what that term is and the DRA about that differentiation.
All right.
This is still at the discretion of the administration, whether they want to come to use that money from that, for that purpose.
Well, flexibility is good.
Yep. So, Amy, do we move this to-
You can move it and then, and I'll figure out the wording. Um, I know what you want.
Cause then we'll have, then we'll have to move it to deliberative anyway.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. So we could still move this forward to public hearing and then we get new wording that we can vote on and move to deliberative.
Yep.
And onto the ballot. That's okay. So at least we moved this forward. Okay. Good idea. Um, have a motion to move this forward to public hearing?
Uh, so moved, a- as amended?
Second by Mr. Vayu. Uh, all those in favor? And that passes.
Sorry to go backwards, but I was just keeping my notes. Is this a multi-year plan or is it forever?
Yes.
But how many year plan is this? Are we thinking?
Roger and I wrote it out. I think we, we, um, we're pretty good shape actually. Here, there's still pretty new.
Yes.
So it's like, um, I think it's five years before first of all, but I can get, it's in the-
It's a, it's in the budget somewhere.
Okay. Something on the order of five.
Yeah, I, actually, I'd like to put it on my, my budget file. Yeah.
We'll make sure it's-
Okay.
Wow. Okay. All right, uh, Amy, is that the last? I don't know, I think?
We just go, we just go.
Yeah, we did. We did. Yep.
Um, we have, I could, oh, oh, go ahead. Sorry, Amy, finish up.
No, that's okay. So yeah, I think, yeah, that's it. Um, the next step is this ad hoc meeting, uh, to discuss PPC. And you can just put it on the budget calendar, Steve.
Okay, the non-meeting.
Yeah, so that's not on here. Um, and Advisory Finance will, I think they'll, that will be their next meeting as well, so.
Yeah, so hopefully after tonight.
Yep.
Be able to schedule something.
Yep. And then you do have a board meeting on January fourth, prior to public hearing. So, not a whole lot of time, but, yeah. Yep. Um, so as far as the presentation, Stephanie, do you, maybe you and I can-
But yeah.
Get together.
I know last year, the last couple of years of presentation, like I just did the public hearing alone.
Yep.
And then deliberative, we split it up. Do we want to do it that way again? Cause I, we're just doing public hearing here again versus
Um.
Cause I remember sitting here last year.
Yeah, I think we are. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But do you want to split up the public hearing presentation? Or do you want me to just kind of deliver it in the deliberative? We've kind of split up and does not matter to me. I want to know if anyone wants to speak at public hearing. This is what I'm asking.
I mean, I suppose those who want to speak should have an opportunity.
If you wanted, before I do any of the warrant articles.
Something. Yeah, I'd like-
You'd like to? Okay.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else? If not, I'll work, I'll work, um.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, we'll figure out what we, how we want to split it and then we'll make sure we work with you. Are you?
So I'll turn over this draft three and then draft one, which has, I don't know if you want to include like a lot of the work that came from the building administration, those first few slides.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure you want to have that at deliberative, but I'm not sure if you want to have some of that at public hearing as well.
Yeah, let me go look at, let me think about that.
So I'll turn both those over.
Yep.
Um, and then you can, you know, cut and paste as you want.
Okay, okay.
I have a question about Article One, which is the candidates. It's always in the voter guide and always part of the deliberative.
Yep.
It's just however many seats are available from wherever place.
Okay.
Um, there's never, there's never, there's no opportunity for whoever's running to have a voice anywhere. It's not gonna be in the warrant article, but it always courses on the sample ballot. So, I am wondering if we can allow some pages in the voter guide for candidates who are running to offer a statement about their candidacy's.
I'm gonna say no. I think that's something people need to do for themselves. I do not believe that should be a political statement. That, that voter guide is not a political statement piece.
Well.
In my opinion.
Okay, but it's not the voice of the board or the administration. It's the voice of the person who's running and we, it's difficult in our communities. I'm not sure about Ma Vernon, but it is difficult for people to understand who they're electing, no matter what office it is. And you can see this in the under vote. So warrants and proposals will get two-thirds or two-thirds more vote than a person. And it's oftentimes the person is more, the most important thing for someone to vote for, not so much the, the warrant. So, you know, as a mechanism to help inform the community about who their, the candidates are, the voter guide, because it's a voter guide, is a good place to make a move to help inform the citizenry and the voters as to what they'll be voting. And be very relatively cheap to add a few pages to a multi-page document. It's already being printed and sent. And it doesn't, it's, could be character limited page, we have a page per person. We could just tell them about themselves, direct people to their websites or whatever. And, um, and have an opportunity to be viewed by the voters. Who are gonna see their names at the back of the voter guide in the sample ballot anyway.
I'd have to ask the board to check with legal about using public funds for candidate, um, distribution. I just don't know.
I personally don't think it's necessary to pay somebody to do that. I'm not in support of that.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that because I just look at what if one person, there's two candidates, one puts it in and one doesn't, and now it looks like the school board is promoting one candidate over another. I just, I can't even fathom going there. I just, I-
Yeah, there are plenty of mechanisms for somebody to get the word out about their candidacy. It shouldn't be on the taxpayers' dime to, to fund that. It shouldn't.
Well. I respectfully disagree with your positions. Incremental cost, it's a significant cost and everyone would have an equal opportunity to provide their statement. So, and there could be a caveat in there about that, a disclaimer.
I, I, I could imagine, John, that somebody that wanted something in there and changed their name to maybe a national polarizing individual, uh, and put their name on the ballot and then now have something in a taxpayer-funded documents that, you know, supports one particular position or another and in their quote-unquote bio, just it, it's a very slippery slope. There's no way in the world that I think this should ever be done.
If, if we can't, I, I mean, they're gonna put any, if they, if someone can write anything they want and put it in there. We don't have a right to edit it or censor it or anything else. We have absolutely no idea what they could say. And then we have to print it? I just, that's not a place for a political candidate statement.
We, we actually can put our own sort of viewpoints on, on warrant articles.
Yeah.
We only do, we either re-support or we don't.
Yeah.
The other sort of component and public meeting and public hearings, that's where you sh- sort of share the, the consensus and verbally of the board.
Yeah. And that's all cool.
I was worried how that, you know, reflects on I.
Yeah, yeah. I, because we wouldn't be able to, I won't say control, but be able to edit what is being said in that statement. It could be poorly for taste.
Idea.
Yeah. So, good intentions.
USA.gov recommends putting candidate bios in your voter guide.
I don't know USA.gov. I'm, like I said, because-
Voter guides provide background information on the candidate and valid measures they was to be voted for and offer details of what the candidate's experiencing goals. Not a-
Yeah, but we, but if, if we're asking someone to write what they want to write to put in there and I can't edit what's being said, they could slam and say some really poor word, poorly worded, poor taste things and it being printed in that guide right next to our warrant articles. I just don't think that's a place for candidates to put their, their, their own personal wording.
So Sohegan Advisory Finance has a letter in there that we don't have.
But that's a group, that's a group that, that votes, that, yeah, it's a yeah, I, I, no. I mean, you can make a motion if you want.
I move that the Sohegan Board allow um, candidates for Sohegan offices to be, seats to be able to have space in the voter guide for their candidate statements.
Okay, there a second? No second? Okay.
I would want to look into this more before I commit.
Okay. So if there's no second, then the motion doesn't go forward. Um, all right, so that's it for the budget items, uh, public input. There's nobody here in the room. Is there anyone online?
One person online, but there is no.
If the person's interested in speaking, they can raise their hand and we'll promote you to be able to speak.
There's one item that I felt.
Sure, okay.
Put me at two locations, it's like, or they can, the policy, EDC and JFC, um, mark him. And for me, there's some sort of alarm box, so it's back then. Um, I'm picking after hours sort of situations happening, that's definitely available. The community is, so there's something, time of need, figure it, just let her, they live it, uh, before it out. I know in a policy that says, you can determine, like, go ahead and purchase it from the district and then you wear it up, like sit. We can just go ahead and see, put into that.
Does that mean anybody could grab it at any time?
I, I, I apologize, yes. So, yes.
Yeah.
Someone needs our defibrillator, they go, they pull the, the, the door open, alarm sounds and players being confronted, somebody for.
Yeah, I can look at that. And then you want to mine, running this? Some information.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll research on that process.
Okay.
That looks like and what could look like.
Okay. Right. Um, all right, so they haven't raised their hand, so we will, um, end the public input and can I have a motion to go into non-public? Under RSA ninety-one A three two C.
So moved.
And you, seconded by, you have a second? Mr. O'Keefe. And I think that's a roll call vote, so if we could start with you, Mr. O'Keefe. Grund, yes?
Hey, yes.
Lover, yes.
All right. So we will-